Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This means the members of the public body as well as members of the public may access this meeting via virtual means. Participants may access this meeting through a remote meeting link as posted on the meeting agenda and through the town's online calendar. When required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so by raising their hand or otherwise signaling their intent to speak. This meeting will be recorded. Please take care to mute your microphone unless you have been recognized by the chair. We will now confirm attendance of members. Please respond with present if you're on the call. Elise Mayaloski? I don't see Elise. Lucia Lopez?
Present.
Matthew Ronca?
Present.
Michael King?
Present.
Parker Happ?
Present.
Jane Moran?
Present.
Karen Wills?
Present.
Vikasath Prati? And Rob Benson is present. And staff, John Gelsic?
Present.
And Lori St. John?
Present.
All right. Thanks, everybody. So I didn't, John sent me an email earlier today about the meeting order of a, and I don't know if we're going to be able to do this because I don't know if the applicant's on, but what I'd like to do is go through administrative items A and B, maybe even D, and then the public hearing and do the MBTA community discussion at the end. I don't know, John, have you heard or were you able? I know I just, I just saw the email about 10 minutes ago. I don't know if the applicant's on.
I did see Rick on. Yeah, he's on, so I think that should work.
All right.
Yep, we're on.
All right. Thanks. So Jane's been our representative. So let's go through our agenda. Item A, Planning Board Representatives, the Trails Coordination and Management Committee. Jane, you've been our representative in the past, correct?
Not for the trails, for the CPC.
Okay.
Which is the next one.
I don't know if we've had a representative to the Trails Coordination Management Committee for multiple, for quite a while. Some of you may know Fran DeYoung. I think he was the last one that I know of that was, and he hasn't been on the planning board for at least a year. Yeah. So we're looking for a representative from the planning board to be on the Trails Coordination and Management Committee. Is there anyone interested in filling this position?
Hey, Rob, I'd be interested in doing that.
That's terrific. Thank you, Michael. Thank you for speaking up. Is there anybody else that's interested?
Can you talk a little bit about what the expectations of the role are and just what you're looking for?
I don't really know much of anything about the Trails Coordination Management Committee. John, do you have any background you could provide?
Yeah, so the position would be basically much like a representative for any of the boards. It would be attending the meetings, participating as a board member. This one is appointed by the select board, so this would be a recommendation to the select board, and then the select board would appoint you as a full member. And then you would just represent the planning board's interests on that committee, though you know, you'd be your individual perspective as well, but it would just be as if you were a member of that board and also representing planning board.
With that being said, is there anybody else that's interested? So I think with, with nobody else jumping at the chance here, I think what we should do is do we, do we take a vote on this, John?
Yes, so the recommended motion is in the meeting packet.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion that the planning board nominate Michael King to serve as the planning board's representative to the Trails Coordination and Management Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So roll call vote. Still don't see Elise. So Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Michael Ronca?
That's two different people. Matthew Ronca or Michael King?
Oh, I made a mistake. Matthew Ronca, sorry.
Yes.
Michael King?
Yep.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Jane Moran?
Yes.
Karen Wills?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. Still, I don't see Vikasath. All right, terrific.
Vic's not attending this week. He's not going to be able to make it. He's on travel.
Okay, I don't. So the next thing is we want to this is something we can appoint. We don't need to recommend a recommend to the select board. So the CPC, Jane's been our representative to the CPC. Jane, why don't you give a little bit about what that committee does, what, how long you've been on it and we'll start there.
Sure. So I think I've been on it for a year or two. I really can't remember, but it's a fun committee. You get to review all of the applications from the various boards and committees that put forth requests for the town CPC money. And there are a variety of requests, everything from playgrounds to monies to for engineering, for different buildings or structures, trails, things like that. It's a fun committee. It's very interesting. But I find I just don't have the time anymore. They meet maybe once or twice a month. But more often, once a month preceding town meetings.
Okay. Is there anybody on the planning board that's interested in this position?
And just to be clear, is this the Community Preservation Committee?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. If no one else were to stand up, I would. I actually find this history kind of interesting.
I think you'd find it interesting, Parker.
All right, excellent. Is there anybody else that's interested? If not, I will entertain a motion that the planning board appoint Parker Happ as the planning board's representative on the Community Preservation Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Terrific. Roll call vote. Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ronca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Jane Moran?
Yes.
Karen Wills?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. All right. Does anybody have any? So we're going to go right, we're going to go to the minutes. 1.4 in our agenda. Anyone have any feedback for Lori from the meeting minutes of July 1st?
I thought they were well done. Thank you, Lori.
All right, terrific. I'd like to entertain a motion that the planning board approve the minutes of July 1st, 2024, as written.
So moved.
Second.
Terrific. Roll call vote. Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ronca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Jane Moran?
Yes.
Karen Will, yeah, Karen?
Yes.
Rob Benson is a yes. All right. So we're going to go into our new public hearing. So I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 24 Chestnut Street Definitive Subdivision Plan.
So moved.
Awesome.
Second.
Great. Roll call vote. Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ronca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Jane Moran?
Yes.
Karen Wills?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. All right, Mr. Olsteen, are you going to be speaking about the project or is somebody going to be speaking? Somebody else going to be speaking about it?
Vito Colonna, I'm with Connor Stone Engineering. He had to represent the applicant. So Rick Olsteen is on the call. He's from Keystone Development, who's the applicant. I'm just going to share my screen. That's all right, just to get it started. Oh.
Yeah, we'd like, I guess, to get a project, an introduction to the project at this point in time.
Okay, so this is at 24 Chestnut. It's a, addresses at 24 and 0 Chestnut Street. And it's a, about a 9.5 acre parcel combined between the two.
Are you, are you, are you intending to show, share your screen?
Yep, it's just, it was disabled at the time, so.
Wait one second.
Should work now.
There we go. Perfect. All right, just wait till that loads up.
All right.
There we go. Okay, so this is, these are the two parcels together. It's owned by Michael Umana right now. And there's an existing house right there on number 24. And then 0 Chestnut is this backland that extends is actually a little tail that goes all the way down to Benson, which is to the rear over in here. And it's basically surrounded by residential uses. This is Davenport over in here, and then single-family residences surrounding on all sides. Since switch over to the site plans. There we go. So this is basically the existing conditions plan. So the intent here is obviously to do a five lot subdivision, which was in the application. So I'm just trying to run through quickly the existing so you can get a feel for that. So this is that existing house that we saw previously. And right around that house is lawn yard areas, and then all this area in the back is wooded. These lines are the existing topography, and it slopes basically away from Chestnut Street all the way down towards the rear of the property back down in here. Offsite way to the left here, there's a wetland offsite. So there's no regulated wetlands within the property, but there was one located offsite. It's on private property, so we weren't able to survey that location, but this is based from visual observation from the property lines and an old Anrad filing that confirmed the wetlands many years ago. So that's where that location is in the back. Flip over to the opposed plan. So what we're looking for is a five lot subdivision with a cul-de-sac, dead-end cul-de-sac off Chestnut Street. So roadway itself would be 400 feet long and just essentially graded down off of Chestnut Street at a fairly moderate grades, 3% to 5%. So we're trying to match the existing grades. There's not much of a cuts and fills. Just a 3% to 5% grade coming down and provides the required frontage for the five lots. We're within the residential B zoning district, so that's 45,000 square feet of lot area and 150 feet of frontage. All these lots comply with that zoning requirement. In the rear lots actually have excess lot area. I don't know if you might remember a while back, they came in with a preliminary plan that had seven lots. So it was a little bit more dense. But they applied for special permits for some relief on the affordable housing. And I believe that might have been denied or there was negative feedback. So they decided to reduce the scale of the project and just go with five lots. So it has a little less intensity on it, a little bit more kind of open space. It's not designated, but a little bit more woodland is preserved by going with those five lots. All right, so I'm just going to look at the roadway profile just quickly for you. I know we just kind of said that grades were at 5% or so, but as you can see, that 5% grade comes down, these dash lines are all the existing grades. So we're really matching that existing grade. There aren't massive cuts and fills out here. It really fits with the existing topography as you come right down through there. Zoom back out just for one second. Get back up to the plan. All right. Okay, in the roadway design itself, we went with the rural road subdivision standards, which is a 40-foot right-of-way, 5 feet, 20 feet of pavement width. And then we looked at the intersection for that roadway design, and we have plenty of site distance in both directions. Greater than 400 feet looking west and 360 feet looking east. So that exceeds the minimum requirements of 200 feet. So we have a good location for the roadway, a good grading, good alignment. We also looked at the fire truck turning in there. We provide the template into the packet in the fire truck and make that movement right into the site, do a full turnaround in the cul-de-sac and make that exiting movement without going into opposite lanes either. You know, you're staying in your own lane. So there's plenty of space on this alignment for the emergency vehicles also. And then as far as utilities go, we have sewer, water, gas, and electric available in Chestnut Street. So we'd extend underground electric and gas throughout the subdivision. We'd bring a new water main right down through and end with a hydrant at the end of the roadway, both for fire protection and maintenance. There's also an existing hydrant right here at the entrance, since this is the kind of the high point of Chestnut Street. It's a blow-off, clean-out. And also, so it would be located between the two fire hydrants, so prime locations for fire protection for all the subdivision. The sewer connections, we are within the sewer district for the front two lots. Lots one and five shown here are already within the sewer district. And there are two sewer stubs already provided for these two lots. However, we're looking for some relief to allow all five lots to connect into the sewer system. Would do that via individual pump stations and a common force main. It would run up the roadway to a gravity manhole and then make the connection into a manhole right in the street right there. That is the preference of the applicant and the advantage to having the sewer connection versus septic would be preservation of a lot of that wooded areas. There's less disturbance, you know, less earthwork, less grading. So really environmental benefit to having those sewer connections for those rear three lots. We also, I know Board of Health is in favor of it. Anytime you can get some of that effluent out of your, you know, discharging to the ground, they're usually in favor of that. I know there's some differing opinions between DPW and Board of Health with the review comments that we received. I'm sure you've all read through those. So we're going to have to work that out, but definitely our preference would be the sewer connection. We think it benefits not only, you know, the developer, but also the town and the overall area to reduce the disturbances. Then we have our stormwater system. We're doing a standard catch basin collection system on the roadway compliance with the subdivision requirements. And then in the back, we have a fairly good size infiltration stormwater basin back in here. And we did size this for the newest NOAA Plus regulations for the stormwater intensities. So that goes all the way up to 10.35 inches in a 24-hour period. So that's the highest standard you can get to right now. And it complies with all those, and we match the peak rate and the volume of runoff leaving the site in all storm events. We provided all that information in the stormwater report, and that still has to be reviewed and assuming through the peer review process. Right. And then I just want to go through just quickly, we had a overall development. If I can find my kind of a schematic provided just to show what the intent was to be able to preserve some of that wooded areas around the site. And this is how, you know, we intend on developing it, you know, with the sewer connections. Without sewer connections, we do have to go into, we can see where the testing was performed in these kind of little bit fringe areas. So there would be more clearing, there would be a little bit more earthwork associated with the site if we need to do that. But we did test all those in the witness with Board of Health. So we do have valid testing to justify each lot within the subdivision regardless of the sewer status. I think that's almost it. You know, we didn't really ask for any waivers on this. The only, it's not really a waiver, but it's discretion of the board is the dead end. And we do have the ability to do a U-shaped road. It would be kind of a looped road. And I think that was looked at a while back through some of the preliminary discussions. You know, would be an eight-lot subdivision with about 1,200 feet of road. So it is something that could be done, but it's not the preference, I don't think, of the developer or the town, because it would result in a lot more disturbance, a lot more infrastructure. And this still provides you the benefit, you know, of having the fire protection coming through. We have hydrants there. You know, I just see this as a much better alternative than that U-shaped road. And I think that that's all I have. I can hit it back over and start taking questions, comments.
Yeah, so one second. This is a question for the board. Do you, do you want to go through like the staff report and consult report, or you, or do you want to just ask questions to the applicant now? We can, we can ask questions at any point, but just kind of trying to get your preference on ordering of like what we do when.
Rob, I think getting the staff report might help answer some questions ahead of time.
All right, let's, let's go through, let's, John, could you, could you give us a staff report?
Sure. It's a conventional subdivision, so it is not an OSLPD. It's only five units. It's a net increase of four units. So the affordable housing component does not apply because that triggers at five new units, and this would only be four new units. They're requesting the construction of a road, a cul-de-sac, a dead-end road. And as a conventional, they can max out at 500 feet. So as you've seen, they, they about 400 feet, so they're within that range. And seems pretty straightforward. The one thing that is, I probably should reach out to the applicant to figure this out, but a stormwater management permit is needed. And usually those are done simultaneously. I don't know if there was a strategy of getting the subdivision done first and then the stormwater management permit, but we can work that out behind the scenes and figure out how to get that up and running. So like I said, pretty straightforward. If there's any specific questions for the board, from the board, then I would be happy to answer them. And I wanted to say, I, there was no waivers I saw that were requested, so it seems like they are consistent with the subdivision regulations. So that's something to know.
Thanks, John. Matthew, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much time we want to spend on it since they, I mean, this, this looks reasonable, but since the idea of a U-shaped road was mentioned, I'm just kind of curious more about that or where, like, mention eight units or eight lots. I'm just kind of trying to picture that because I didn't notice that when I'm reading through the documents.
All right, so essentially it just came in and went through. There were two lots in the middle and then perimeter lots all the way around. So it essentially put the development all the way out to the perimeter throughout. So it kind of came in. You follow my cursor, it kind of came in and went around like that. We had an old preliminary plan that had been submitted from years back. We could always provide that just for reference, but I think it was shown to the board a while back, or maybe not board, but town staff.
Lucia, go ahead.
My question had to do with DPW's response. They said there's a moratorium on Chestnut Street given repaving work. Is that something that's going to affect your project?
That shouldn't. They repaved around in 2019. I think it was late in 2019, and there's a five-year moratorium, so that would be up this year at some point. I think it's later in the fall, but it really wouldn't affect the schedule, I don't think.
Okay.
Thanks, Lucia. Parker, go ahead.
Do the plans as presented also reflect DPW's comments and comments about a sidewalk? And if not, what is the consideration to accommodate that?
So we did, we showed a sidewalk, just, you know, running down from, at the time, we didn't realize that they were planning to maybe have an extension. So we just dead-ended the sidewalk up at the extension. I mean, at the end of the roadway right here.
But they do, they do accommodate the extent, the extension, just to be clear?
Yeah, we just have to modify this entrance to put a curb cut ramp, essentially, that would need to add. So that way that you could have the ramps running across the entrance of the driveway. So a fairly small change just to accommodate that and coordinate with it.
Perfect.
Matthew, go ahead.
Two kind of follow-ups on the DPW comments as I'm trying to find the notes here. I thought somewhere in the documentation, I read a note about greater involvement with the work that's currently be done on Chestnut Street to build the sidewalks along there. I just wanted to raise that. And the other thing was, I thought I saw that DPW had some concerns about the back units connecting. If there was more comments on your side at this point on that note.
Right, they, so they had those, yeah, comments. That was about the sewer connections. So we still have to work that out. That was about connecting these three lots to the sewer, whether that's feasible or not. So that's something we have to meet with DPW and Board of Health. Board of Health was for it. DPW wasn't, seemed to be, so we have to work out that between the boards and departments to see what works best for the town.
All right, let's, let's go to our consultant report. I'm not sure who's speaking on the behalf of Paray.
So Rob, Par has not started their review yet. We're working out the scope with the applicant at this time, so it'll be presented probably at the next meeting.
All right. So are there more questions? Because typically we get to the point of a sidewalk and then we kind of, we, we get an introduction, staff report, our preliminary questions. And then we try to schedule a sidewalk. So before scheduling any sidewalk, is there any more questions? Because we're, we're going to probably have to continue this to our next meeting.
I just have one quick one about the elevation of this property. It's quite steep at the rear, it seems, based on the GIS. But are based on the parkings, and I'm wondering if you're taking or planning to take added protections and or maybe you're not going to be, you know, constructing during like raining season if such a thing occurs in Massachusetts, but what if any additional preparations are you going to take to mitigate, you know, runoff and drainage? Because it looks pretty steep. And we've seen what's happened with like Blueberry Lane. We're going to be continuing in a discussion about runoff issues with other. So I just wanted to get your feedback on that.
Yep. Yeah, it does. It is fairly steep as you get back to the rear, like you say. So during construction, we'd use this area down here. Everything kind of funnels to this back corner. So we put this in as a temporary basin to start. And then would have behind that, the erosion controls, the straw waddles and silt fence, then another row of it just up gradient, and then a third row right at the end. And then as the drainage gets installed, would have inlet protection on each of those. Essentially, what we're trying to do is slowly break it up by the time it gets here, and then at the end also have this large basin already installed as one of the early items to trap anything before it goes offsite to the rear. So it is steep, but it does kind of funnel all to this one spot, so we do have a spot to collect and treat and contain it.
Thank you.
All right. Vito, is there somebody that could, we'd like to try to schedule a sidewalk to actually get the lay of the land of the property? So that when we can get to our next meeting, we have kind of a picture in our head of what it's going to, what the topography looks like.
Okay. And do you need anything done by us for that sidewalk, like staking the center line or anything like that? Something that you'd usually like to see?
Nothing particular. Usually somebody, usually someone will meet us just to kind of Nothing particular. Usually somebody, usually uh, someone will meet us just to kind of. Give us, uh, I don't know, a guided tour.
More of it, yeah, like, yeah, we'll be there and we can toy you through and. It's easy to find where everything is. There's stone walls out there. So we can kind of show you exactly where everything's in a leg. Yep.
What are, what are people's uh, on the board? What, or and, and Vito, uh, what are people's availability for this Saturday? Sat- I know we get, I know weekends in the summer are tough, but.
I'd rather do early on Saturday.
I'd do early.
The 20th, right? I could do it earlier. As well.
What, what's early?
Eight o'clock. You do nine.
Eight thirty or nine.
A toddler is up at six every day, guys. So anytime.
So lucky.
I vote for nine.
Nine is good too.
Um, I'm away that next week this weekend. It's a Rick. I don't know if you're around. Uh, you're gonna walk him through.
Rick, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yes, I, I can um, I can accommodate this Saturday and maybe we can do a little layout in advance just so. You know where everything is.
Location of the road, maybe. Um, where some of the lots are.
Yeah, Rick, I can be out there and we'll work it out.
Where would we park?
That's was my next question.
There's, there's, there's plenty of space to um, pull off the road into the property. He, he's got a barn area and kind of a, a working area. So I don't think you have any trouble parking.
So at the house, it's to be demolished?
Yep.
Yeah, you just pull right in the driveway and then in the back, there's just a big open area.
Okay. So we did, did we decide on a time?
Can we do, can we do nine AM?
Okay with me.
Good with me.
All right, nine AMs. We will meet at the property. So is uh, we're kind of at the point where we're going to continue this unless there's uh, any following questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, I have a couple of questions.
Bob, uh, can you state your name and address and uh, ask, ask your questions?
Yeah, the name is Robert Cordner. The address is 16 Chestnut Street. Uh, we're right next door. So this will have a, a major impact on us, of course. Um, my question was maybe just a clarification from uh, what was talked about earlier. Uh, and that is the uh, the fact that the affordable housing requirement is not applicable here. Can, can someone just go over that again for me?
Sure, the, the way the Hopkins Bylaw uh, works is if there is five. An addition of five housing units on that fifth unit. Uh, an affordable housing unit needs to be constructed. But here, there's an only an addition of four units because one property is being basically. It seems torn down and, and reconstructed. So it's only a net addition of four properties. So it doesn't trigger the affordable housing. Um, requirement. There's no need with this, with the addition of four, four houses in this, in this subdivision.
Okay, and I was just curious if the developer is planning to build affordable housing somewhere else in town?
Rick or Vito, do you want to answer that?
I, I think, I think Vito lost his connection, but would you mind repeating the question? And I'll do my best.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if uh, your uh, organization plans to build affordable housing somewhere else in Hopkinton.
We don't have any plans at, at this particular time to do so.
Okay, um, I just, just an observation, um, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that the board's gonna come by and take a look at. Uh, where these lots will, will be placed. Uh, and um. I would, I think I can speak for uh, our next door neighbor. Uh, the fact that there is going to be uh, first of all, a lot. That will be literally right out our front door, very, very close to us. Uh, and our next door neighbor will have a lot that's literally right in their backyard. So uh, it almost looks like. Uh, we've attempted to shoehorn five lots uh, right in the middle of a bunch of residential areas. It's uh. I realize it conforms with, you know, all of the, the bylaws and the rules and the regulations. But uh, for 30 years, we've lived here with nothing but woods in front of us. But now uh, we're gonna have five home lots, uh, literally right out our front door. It's uh, it's not a pleasant. Thought that we have about what that's gonna look when it's done. But thank you for hearing me.
Hey guys, uh, this is Chris Cooney. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes.
You can. Hey, um, I live at 20 Davenport, uh, very close to Bob, obviously. Uh, and this will be virtually in my backyard and it looks like the basement, uh, excuse me, the basin will be right in my backyard. Or, or darn close anyway. So to be brutally honest with you, I'm not real excited about this upfront. But that said, do you guys have any, um, this could be very early and I'm not a expert in. Planning uh, subdivisions, so bear with me. Do you guys have any idea from the back corner of my actual home, which I saw on a, a picture that he showed? It was like the first slide he showed, uh, the back of my home was there. How far that would be until that basin? Uh, because I'm a little concerned about that. And uh, because unfortunately that whole area looks like it's going to be cleared and it won't be wooded. So I'll be staring at construction for quite some time and a basin. Which is kind of a bummer because we bought back here specifically and paid more money for this lot because it was wooded. So that's a concern. I'm, I'm wondering if uh, the guys have had any type of measurement like that. Um, A and B, uh, are there any flags anywhere that I could walk back there and get an approximate idea? Like where lot four and five might be to see how close it's gonna get to me. And then kind of finally, it looks like that drainage easement and it all comes downhill. And I, I think somebody earlier from, from uh, Keystone or somebody, uh, the developer said, you know. If that basin's not there, that's coming in my backyard. So that doesn't excite me either because it, I, I look out there and everything's coming down at me. So just a couple of questions. I don't know if somebody can answer a few of those for me. That would put a little more comfort as to, you know, the water situation. Thank you.
So.
Rob, you're still muted.
Hold on one second. Uh, one, one thing, Chris, uh, with our sidewalks, anyone can attend. Uh, a planning board sidewalk. So you're welcome to join us at Saturday at nine AM if you can. And come on a sidewalk of, of their, of the property.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
Rick, I don't know if you have the dimensional distance from like, you probably, I don't know if you have those off the. Ready, at, at the ready.
Uh, I, I don't. Um, we can certainly get that information or, or, you know, close to it. We don't have the survey of. Um, his property, but we still have a survey of our property, but I, I don't have that. Um, readily available. Vito looks like is back on, so I don't know. So if you heard the question or you can guesstimate the answer.
Yep, I'm gonna bring up the plan. Uh, right now I can bring it up so you can take a look at it. And just so I get an idea where we're looking, just one sec, I'll bring up the plan. Sorry about that. I lost my connection there for a minute. Um, all right, so um, were you looking at this, which butter, I'm sorry, was it this one?
Yeah, I, I think Vito was kind of your, probably page, maybe up on page one of nine.
Okay.
Or two, maybe two.
I can look at, we could look at maybe this one right here.
And wait till it fills. Yeah, yeah, it doesn't really show it. You had another one that actually showed my, my home down on the south side here.
Oh, that was on the G I S.
Yeah, I think it was the first, the first one you showed, Vito.
Yep, just pull, trying to pull that up.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, you, which, I'm sorry.
So yeah, so, so zoom out a pinch. So I'm gonna be on the southwest corner. You can see my home down in the corner, next to where it says Google.
Oh, right down in here?
Yeah, and that's all downhill kind of sorta, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the large well on that runs between the two.
Yeah, gotcha. Where it's kind of dark there, that's all.
Right. Yep, that says a large well and it separates the two. Um, and that's why we put in those protections and we, like we said, we did design it up to the newest storm, so would. And we controlled the rate and the um, volume. Uh, so you wouldn't be any increase going towards the wetland over there.
Yeah, right there.
And there's all kinds of factors of safety involved uh, with that.
No, these little ones right here.
Uh, see, there is a good buffer between this home here and the corner uh, of that subdivision. Uh, and that's where the stormwater controls are.
And Vito, do you have a guesstimate as to the distance from his house to the, to the um, detention basin?
Uh, sure. So that basin's right in this corner where that's about 150, so one about 300, a little over 300 feet. Uh, from this corner. And then we're also from there, we have about another 50 feet or so. Um, so it could be about 350 to 400 feet uh, away from the house.
Gotcha. Is that southwest corner flagged yet or no?
Uh, no, uh, we didn't flag that corner right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can get better dimensions. I'll put myself a note uh, to get a dimension from that house uh, over to the basin or the property corner.
I could also point out while this plan is, is available, you can see the, the, all the green area maintained around the perimeter of the property. So it won't be um, cleared like right to the lot lines. Um, so I don't think you'll be able to see this detention basin.
Right.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm just gonna, uh, can you, I just want to share my screen on something really quick too, on the G I S map, which shows the topography. And then, and this is for the last comment. Uh, if you can see. This, so you're, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Your property is located here approximately according to the G I S uh, map. If you follow these demarcations, this shows the slope of the water flow. Is going to want to follow this direction. So if the quarter basin is, or if the uh, runoff is all heading this way. It's not going to go towards your property over here theoretically. So that, that's kind of my concern.
Parker, his help, uh.
Thank you.
Chris Cooley's property, I think, is the one to the left of that one highlighted, right?
Bottom right corner of the big R.
Bottom right corner of the big R, yeah.
So even better. So if you zoom out.
Yep.
Yeah, so you're, you're located over here. So it's, yeah, it's going to head, come, wants to head this way. So you're saying your property is right here or right here?
No, uh, yeah, right there. Yes, correct.
Yeah, it's kind of on the plan left of that little stream. So it's kind of under where the N is on Hayden.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's not even an issue then because the water's just gonna want to head this way and then out.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, uh, Alisa, just state your name and your address.
Hi, um, I'm Alessandra Venaria. I go by Alessa. Um, I live at 18 Chestnut Street, um, with my family. Um, so I'm right next to Michael Yumina. Um, and the coordinators uh, at 16 Chestnut Street. Um, I was just concerned uh, about the impact on the ecosystem, the local ecosystem. Um, there is a large number of wildlife that lives back there. Um, and I'm worried about the destruction of that. I'm also concerned um, about the um, destruction of the trees. Um, at a rate faster that they can regrow, um, having a negative impact on the environment. And contributing to um, global warming.
All, all good concerns, all valid concerns, but those, that's. As a planning board, that's not something we can um. But uh, we have a conservation commission in town, so they're gonna need to go before the conservation commission. And that's where those type of concerns would be better. I think uh, voiced, I, uh, we can't really um. We don't have jurisdiction over like trying to protect wildlife that I'm aware. I, uh.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Conservation Commission is juris, has jurisdiction over the wetlands. So planning board, I mean, there's no bylaw or anything that says a planning board is tasked with protecting the environment. But I, I think the planning board does have some jurisdiction over trees and landscaping and. Um, you know.
Yeah.
Conservation of land and, and that, those, those areas.
Okay, um, yeah, we, we definitely. There's, there's buffers and, and setbacks and landscape plans that are submitted with new developments.
Uh, three.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Michael.
Um, so yeah, I think all the abutters should definitely come by on the sidewalk. Um, is the property line uh, that's gonna be developed on staked out right now? So it's surveyed, I guess it's a question for um, Rick or Vito.
No, it hasn't been staked.
Yeah, I think, I don't think, Vito, you can answer, but I don't think there's any chance it's gonna be staked out by this Saturday.
No, I don't think we can turn it around that quick. Um. Yeah, you know, we could get something that's very close, um, probably kind of flag it up. Um, but getting definitive property lines staked out, I don't think we get it done by this Saturday.
Go, go, go ahead Lucia.
Um, I think based on the concerns that we're hearing, one question that I have for DPW. Um, and is in terms of the sewer connection versus the septic. Because from what the developer said, if they connect to the town sewer, then they would touch less of. The existing trees, um, which would hopefully address some of the issues. So I, I would like to hear DPW's take on connecting versus not, given the concerns that have been expressed.
All right, we're gonna have to, uh, we're gonna have to gather that input. Nobody from DPW is on. Um. Matthew, go ahead.
I wonder if it's premature to do a sidewalk this weekend until uh, we get the first round of the uh, review from PAR. Um, potentially have some insight into the, whether there, there's gonna be a stormwater plan filed. Uh, so we have both in mind and potentially have more feedback from DPW about their thoughts on septic first as well. Uh, seems like we're probably not going to close the meeting with one more or the hearing with one more round. So I, I don't know if there's a rush to do it before our next meeting.
I guess that's a question for Vito and, and Rick. Do you guys? Uh, plan on submitting a stormwater management plan in the near, near term or in conjunction?
Um, yeah, if it's, if it's required, we'll get that right in.
I think our, our hope was to get the initial feedback from um, PAR. So that if any revisions were necessary, we, we don't wind up doing it twice, but.
Yeah, through, uh, through the chair, but yeah, I think at least having the um, peer review would be good to Matthew's point too. Just so, you know, you have that knowledge when we go out there for things to look for um, in person.
All right, let's, let's do that. Let's um, let's not, let's uh. Not do the, the sidewalk this, this Saturday. Let's. Let's wait for the property to be, I, I think having some um, some markings. So we can see some uh. Get some sense of where things are gonna go.
Okay.
Uh, at our next, uh, when you come before the planning board, there'll be feedback from our peer review consultant PAR. And if it makes sense at that time, we can schedule the sidewalk. But I think that's our next step is to continue, is to continue this conversation to our next meeting.
Sounds good.
John, is, uh, is our next meeting August? Uh.
August 5th.
August 5th. Are you guys available to come back on August 5th?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, um, and do we need to continue a decision or no? All right. Um, and do we need to continue a decision or no, John?
Don't believe so long, check. No, the decision is due October twenty-third, so we are good.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for twenty-four Chestnut Street to August fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, sorry, could I just make uh, one uh, one more comment regarding this agenda item?
Sure, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, I um, had thought that I had read uh, or had heard that um, we were actually trying to slow down development if not significantly restrict development. Uh, and uh, based on what I've seen from appropriations committee report uh, at annual meeting and other information, uh, we we may very well be running a deficit uh, in the budget. Um, because we've had so much development and we're not getting the revenue coming in. So, you know, it just seems sort of uh, counterintuitive that now we're gonna entertain more development uh, when we've got that kind of situation facing the uh, the town going forward.
Thanks, Bob. I I totally appreciate your sentiment. Um, as a landowner, the property owners have rights uh, and they want to try to maximize their return on their property. We, and if they don't it's um, they have to go through this approval process. And so we're we're trying to um, listen to their proposal. And we're gonna, it's through this public hearing process, we're gonna voice, get everybody's concerns on the table. They're gonna propose their projects. And that's what we're gonna do. We can't just say no without uh, having a standard process that everyone abides by.
Fair enough.
All right, uh, roll call vote. Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ronca.
Yes.
Michael King.
Yes.
Parker Hap.
Yes.
Jane Moran.
Yes.
Karen Wills.
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. All right. Thanks, uh, Vito and Rick. We'll we'll see you at our next meeting on August fifth.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna jump back to MBTA community's discussion. Does, does somebody want to kick us off? Anyone have any comments they want to start with?
I definitely can if we don't have, if nobody else has anything to kick off with.
Michael, go ahead. I mean, Matthew, Matthew, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so, does it make sense to just kind of sync up with what we've talked about so far since the annual town meeting? And one of the things I did was kind of look at some of the questions that were asked and raised, and I I think we should add some answers to them. Should I just go? Does it make sense to just start through there?
Sure.
Cool. Okay. So.
Through the chair. Matthew, that might be hard to see. I'm only getting the presentation on your screen.
Yeah.
Uh. Sharing your screen.
Yeah, I don't know how to share the screen. There's a bug in Zoom's client. So, um, of course, I'm having trouble with my mouse right now, so it's.
It might be hard for people to see what you're what you're displaying.
Okay. Um, assuming actually picks up.
Can we spotlight him as a participant?
Think you need to make that setting change individually.
Uh, pinned to first screen seems to work. All right, um, well, I'll talk and whether people see it or not, hopefully it's, there's enough being talked about. It does look a little bit blurry. Apologize for that. Um, so just re covering what we did in um, in June was we selected areas for Zach to examine. We talked about how we want to solicit feedback through these sessions. And we want to discuss areas that were raised by the community. Um, the questions that uh, I I saw raised in the town meeting were um, school impact. Uh, basically, these were the high level categories that I kind of classified most of the feedback from. Um, obviously, if people have other things we think we should talk about, let's raise those. Um, it's school impact, traffic impact. Several people raised concerns that it seemed like the state kept changing its minds. Um, there was one person who raised issues about the the well water there and non-permeable surfaces. Few people complained about uh, the lands that we selected were occupied. That's something that I I think we also already addressed in that we were trying to address uh, areas that weren't going to be immediately developed. And then there was just some concerns that rezoning was bad. We heard already that people were concerned about the lands evolving. And unfortunately, I don't think there's much we can do about that last thing, just but one of the just goes to show that when we think about zoning in town, uh, rezoning is something that uh, we need to look at with a holistic view and uh, think long term. Um, we looked at uh, four different districts that we've identified so far, the two last time and two this time, and they've all been occupied because we didn't want unconstrained growth. Uh, I don't think it's practical for us to say that we're not gonna get, that we're gonna get zero growth just because population in the state is growing and ideally, we'd want to try and smooth growth, this growth rate out to have a consistent growth, which itself is a little impractical. Uh, but we intentionally look for areas that were not going to result in immediate spurt of growth, specifically because we didn't want to impact the school. Um, single family units in town seem in line with both state and national numbers that I was able to find, about point six students per single family home. One of the things that a lot of people raised concerns about was legacy farms was a recent development where there was actually point seven students per single family home. Um, new homes, people moving in, so we didn't have a lot of turnover. Um, but the one thing that stood out when uh, the town did the growth study report is that the Woodview Apartments, the dense housing actually had between point one five and point two students per apartment. So actually much less than a single family home, which is itself in line with the numbers I was able to find both federally and statewide, which are somewhere between point one and point two that I could find. Um, so I think that's something that we didn't communicate very well, if at all, um, in terms of what to expect with um, the student population just based on statistics. Um, yeah. So if we were to build seven hundred and fifty minimum units at that rate, we'd be looking at about one hundred and twelve, one hundred and fifty new students, which is a lot. It's about, uh, I think half a classroom uh, per grade for all twelve grades if we did that. Um, if we looked at just Carbone, and this, this is where I don't know the exact rates of the watersheds, the water, wetlands and everything else, but it looks like maybe about sixteen to thirty-five students. I think that was a number that was estimated about three hundred people during the town hall. I'm just trying to give a better idea of what the impacts would be based on statistics. Um, and that comes out to um, you know, one to two students per grade at that average. Um, don't know that we've done any formal traffic studies. We've talked about how the Upper Cedar District that we proposed annual town meeting would probably predominantly head up to Route nine. There were some concerns that it would increase traffic around the the parks. Um, Windsor itself would be close to I four ninety-five, uh, which does have a drawback that both of those would discourage growth of the business district. Um, which is something that the town has in the past voted for, trying to develop further uh, by building up a more walkable business district. Um, whereas Legacy Farms, we didn't talk about too much. Um, but you know, we walked around uh, the trails for the sidewalk. And we saw a lot of people using back roads in that general area. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of options for people leaving uh, that area where it's just gonna add traffic to Route one thirty-five or we're down uh, the back road. So something to to keep in mind, in my opinion, with the with the um, the traffic. Uh, one of the concerns was phrased in few different ways, I think, also. State keeps changing its mind. There's a lack of information. The state's using scare tactics. Um, I I think in general, this, and John's probably gonna be in a better spot to address that. Like, I feel like the state hasn't changed its mind too much significantly. Um, things have been clarified. There's a lot of unknowns while guidelines were being developed. Um, but the one clear aspect is to some extent, I think they are using scare tactics, but they're intending to try and back them up. Um, and that they want to increase pressure. And that's something that um, I don't think we did a good job of really replying to in terms of the funding question, because while the state has changed some of what they're planning in terms of where the funding would be restricted, it's been directionally adding new uh, new new sources of funding, new grants, new uh, weightings that would be impacted negatively if we didn't adapt, adopt the MBTA guidelines. Um, and so while things have been changing, it it seems like there's a clear picture that they're trying to present. And just in general, that they want to encourage denser development town centers, uh, accessory dwellings is part of uh, what they've written and development located near transit. These were the things that went into choosing the Upper Cedar District. Um, so I just want to highlight that this, even though as an, as a uh, adjacent town, we're not required to put something there uh, within the MBTA uh, radius. Um, it is explicitly called out in the law uh, as as something that's being encouraged. And so while we don't need to focus there, I think it's it's worth calling out if we do try to keep something towards mass transit, such as the business district downtown, if we're gonna add a bus line there, um, that it seems to be in line with the law. Um, just trying to think of what we didn't say during the annual town meeting that we want to think about. Um, and this is something where with the impact on the wells and the watersheds, I don't have a good answer to. I I think this is something that we might, we probably need to delegate to the to John or the professional side. Um, somebody raised concerns that um, building more development on the Carbone property in particular would have a negative impact on some of the houses and wells in that area. Um, I don't have anything else to say on that since it's outside my expertise. Um, and I think the final note I want to raise was something that I don't think I saw an answer to, but we selected the two new districts. Um, and we've examined for will have examined four in depth uh, by the end of the current round. Um, something that came up in Zach was whether we could modify the map at annual town meeting. And there was a, there was discussion that we couldn't practically add new districts. Um, but I think there was an open question about whether we could remove districts on the floor. And I I don't know if I saw feedback, um, if we ever got an answer to that or if that would be impractical. Um, but something else I wanted to raise if we wanted to talk about.
So I I think I think I can answer that one is that uh, anyone can propose modifying the districts at town meeting. And as long as they get uh, someone to move the motion in a second, it will um, be an amendment. So that is just the way uh, town meeting works. Um, does it mean what someone proposes is gonna comply with the rules? No. Um, does it mean we'd have any way to know if it could comply with the rules? No. Uh, but could that happen? That could have happened at the last, at the most recent town meeting. Somebody could have proposed I don't know, any property. And if they got somebody to second it, they could have, they could have got a vote.
So it seems like we could, we if if we had three or four different districts that we had, knew which combinations would work, we could over propose and work to remove ones that we thought were going to sink a proposal. I'm thinking about alternative strategies. So we're not putting all our eggs in one basket. If we get the town meeting, the flip side of that is, are we concerned that we'd overzone? Um, and we don't want to do that. I'm trying to think of like, what is our strategy for the final map that we propose here?
We keep the map. That's the strategy. I said, we keep the map. We don't change the map. And for all the reasons that you listed, that the big concern is we don't want to have more students. This, your facts and figures dispel that immediately. Thirty-five kids, eh, if we build out at Carbone's. The map is approved by state regulators and has already been heralded by different associations as a shining example of the proposal. So the risk is, is we either don't keep the map and do something new that might not be compliant. And for all of the evidence that you supported that there's new grants or sources of funding that could hit us, we don't, I don't want to be in the laboratory of legal theory with this issue facing capital expenses that if we lose a thirty million dollar grant for our schools, now each of us have to pay over the thirty-year term of our bond, how much more in property taxes. And there's this advertisement campaign by Goodyear from a long time ago, where it was one of the most successful advertising campaigns ever. And what they did is they put the baby in the tire. And a car was going straight at the baby. And to me, us changing this map right now is essentially risking tax, like losing funding. And if we can make that feeling relevant to folks in town, put the baby in the tire, that your taxes might go up, we might lose grants, we probably could get slapped by the state. We're gonna have to pay excise amounts of legal fees. We, who knows what the penalties will be long term. And if we can't receive those grant funds again, then they're cooked, they're gone. And to me, just based on the facts and figures you showed today, thirty-five kids, you know, like, that's, that's, this isn't the 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 huge impact it would be. And I'd say to finish the thought is water quality. We have, you know, a community that is adjacent to the map, that they literally have PFAS in their water and private, you know, funds necessary to allocate. If you want to do private funds to allocate to fix that, what would actually be necessary could be in the millions. If eventually we could get some sort of, you know, water brought down to them, that could give them clean water. And I think, Matt, the shining example of your hard point, which I so appreciate making is, we have to think in terms of like decades. It's a good plan to keep the map.
So a couple of things. I think the talking point of like the 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 plan was applauded by the state. I think we all, as a planning board, need to remember we were voted in by the residents and voters of town, not the state. So we should be beholden to the voters and our constituents. And if the state um, applauds us, great, but that plan didn't pass town meeting. So we need to first and foremost be appalled into the voters of town. This, I think, so Carbone's, uh, it's tough to say how many child age kids. Like we, like, I don't know if anybody has seen the school projections for new students uh, by like twenty thirty. Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna go up considerably uh, over the next six years. Uh, I think they're projecting from a little around four thousand. Uh, Matthew, you may know better with your wife on the school committee, but I think they're around four thousand. Projections to almost five thousand in six to eight years. And seven hundred and fifty, like if if a fully built uh, project was available to a developer and they could, they could readily do this, that would be over, that'd increase, there'd be over ten percent of the town's dwelling units. Like, there's less than seventy-five hundred dwelling units in Hopkinton today. So just think that'd be, if you add ten percent more dwelling units, it'd be on the order of, say, ten percent more kids, four hundred, four hundred to five hundred potentially. Like, maybe if it's a small parcel, maybe a much smaller number, but um, I am concerned just proposing the same map would be rejected and it's not listening to the will of town meeting that we just had. Matthew, go ahead.
Um, I'm.
Through the chair.
One second, Jane.
Mm hmm.
All due respect, um, I I think you just ignore the 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 difference in uh, school age population in dense housing versus single family housing in presuming that if we added ten percent of houses in town, we'd increase the enrollment by ten percent. Um, the.
We we have, Matthew, we have no control over what a developer builds. We we have no control if they build three, three-bedroom uh, apartments versus one studio apartments. We have no control. So once it's zoned, those projections, if they build three to four-bedroom apartments, because there's a lot of interest in people moving into town because. if they build three to four-bedroom apartments, because there's a lot of interest in people moving into town because of the schools. If they look at that as the best business case to make the most money, we can't stop it at that point. So that's, that's the situation.
Sure. I mean, statistics though, right? Statistics always have abnormalities. Um, but the, the type of people buying a single-family house are more likely to be raising a family and, and make use of the schools. And that's what the numbers show. And when we saw a whole bunch of new housing, the other statistics are that new houses do tend to have an increased impact on the schools. So a whole bunch of people moving into a new development like Legacy Farms is going to have a disproportionately high, and we saw that. And as those houses get older and those families, some of them stay and their kids age out, that number will likely come back down towards the, the, the mean. And to, also all due respect, I think a lot of the issue at town, looking at some of these questions, were that we didn't give answers to the questions that they were asking. We didn't have the numbers. We didn't raise, we didn't call out when people were raising issues that weren't, uh, accurate in the scope of the information that we had or that we should have had. Um, and, and one thing I meant to ask is, I know you reached out to the school committee. Did you get a feedback on, on them from any comment? Um, I know we talked about, I could follow up if you hadn't.
I have not received, uh, received any response as of yet.
I'll, I'll follow up and I just want to make sure that we weren't going through different channels.
Parker, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, uh, just building on Matt's point too, the, the, if you think of the macroeconomics of our economy today, with where interest rates were during COVID, uh, just historic lows, you're seeing a, a macro trend where not only boomers, but people writ large are going to stay in their homes long simply because they refinanced and now have a 2.7 or 2% interest rate on their homes. And so to Matt's point as well, on the long-term, we're gonna see folks age out, but stay in their homes over the course of 30 years or longer, simply by the fact that they're, you know, they've been anchored to a lower interest rate and aren't going to want to move from town. Cause one, my house is paid for, but two, I don't want to have to, you know, pay potentially a higher interest rate if I, you know, go into a new property. So you're, you're already seeing this on, on the front end of folks that, uh, purchased a home during the pandemic, that they're staying in their homes longer, which means over the course of, you know, 30 years, we're likely not going to have as many people leave the town. It's like the first thing. Second is, is, uh, commercial property is infinitely more valuable in terms of real, of a real estate investment than it is during residential. So I categorically question a assumption that the folks wouldn't do some sort of like mixed use, uh, just simply because of the opportunity for getting higher commercial rents. So thinking that we're gonna have, you know, flats with, you know, a thousand, taller than condos is, uh, you know, I, I just don't see that as, as a, as, as a reality. And I think the last point is too, totally respects, you need to, uh, take into the account of, uh, folks' opinion at that town meeting. It's five votes is, and that's a coin flip. And I think it was on day three of town meeting where we had, we did not have the, uh, huge influx of folks for the first initial days for the capital projects. And if it's a single-day town meeting, as it's looking to shape up to be, I believe our attendance is gonna be way higher. Um, and, you know, we'll be having an opportunity to pass this map. Good map. We should stick with it.
So I don't know if anyone had a chance to see the joint meeting of the school committee and the select board the other night. But there was a question proposed to, uh, they were trying to appoint somebody to the school committee. Uh, there was a couple of candidates, cause somebody had resigned, um, from the school committee. And one of the questions was about, uh, the school population going up or coming down over time. And I think the general consensus, or at least the answers were the school population in Hopkinton doesn't really have a path forward of going down because people move up, the, the homes are expensive, the taxes are expensive. So we're in a cycle where a lot of, not everybody, but enough people move out after their kids gra- uh, graduate high school to someplace else, whether they go from a, uh, a, uh, a suburban ho- home in Hopkinton to more of a city living environment. But those, the school population doesn't seem to be going down, um, because of this phenomenon of people not staying at the same rate they did in Hopkinton decades prior. There's this phenomenon of people moving out after their kids graduate. So that was the response at the school committee and select board meeting. And I know, um, at least to a certain degree, uh, there is, that, some of that definitely happens. Go ahead, Matthew.
Two things. Um, first of all, I'm not necessarily, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't look at the other two pro- um, areas that were identified, especially if we're already looking at them. It, I think, even if we said that we think Upper Cedar District and the, and the business district, and I, I definitely think the business district makes sense for sure, um, should be on the map. I, I've, one of the questions that was raised, like, why were these chosen? And if we're already doing research on other alternatives, I think it's good to say, like, we looked at these options and maybe we find something that's better. Maybe we find something that, it's like, we looked at other options and they just, they weren't as good for these reasons. Or we can build a map that we have the flexibility to, um, remove things from later. The other side is, going back to the grocery, that was, that's only a few years old now. I think it's, uh, was done in three, completed three years ago. Um, it actually showed that over the previous decade, um, going into COVID, the outside of Legacy Farms, the schools were based, the schools population was basically flat. That the growth in town was basically driven by large new single-family developments. And so I, again, disagree with a bit of what you're saying there. And even, yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's the end of my comment.
Well, Legacy, by and large, Legacy Farms is, is, uh, built, at least all the non, uh, 55 plus on all, on all, all the non-age restricted is, is built. And the schools are still predicting like a, a 10-plus, 20-plus percent growth over the next six to eight years. I think there's a lot of sentiment to not add to that. But I don't think it's the only, uh, uh, sentiment of like the MBTA communities restrictions. I think there's, uh, people live in Hopkinton for a lot of reasons, but one of, one of the reasons is the character of the town, the charm of the town. Uh, like, and if, if you were gonna start, if the town was gonna have to start having super dense apartment-style buildings throughout the town, the town would be different. There's a, there's a, a large, I don't know the exact number of, uh, of people, but there's definitely sentiment across town where they, there's this, uh, lack of desire to have, uh, apartment-style buildings in town. Go ahead, Parker. Oh, Jane, uh, Jane, sorry. I, I stepped over here. Go ahead, Jane.
I had a question. Um, I was under the impression that not all of the grants that come to Hopkinton would be halted, but a certain type. Could John clarify that or am I off base on that?
Yeah. So MBTA communities, um, impacts certain grants, some all grants.
It's not all grants.
No, I mean, no, this I don't know.
Okay. Um, so do you know if the school grants would be impacted? I didn't think that they would be impacted.
As of right now, school funding is not one of the, uh, funding sources that would be impacted by MBTA communities. I don't know if that will change in the future. I don't know if there has been talk at the, you know, the state house of changing that. I don't know any of that, but I can say, um, from what we have been told by the state in the guidelines and in the law, there's certain grants, I think there's 13 or 16 of them at this point that are impacted.
Because I thought there was some conversation and there was somebody that put out a chart that said, I don't know, uh, less than half a million dollars in grants would be subject if, if we didn't go along with the state, that we would be subject to that.
So, yeah, that, I kind of talked about the grant funding argument, uh, a couple of times. The grant money that we've received up to this point is not impacted. It's the grant money in the future. So there's really no way we can know how much is gonna be impacted because it would be for grants that we have not applied for or been granted.
Right. But again, it's a certain type so far.
Right. But if we look at the funding that we've received from those grant sources, then you can come up with a figure. But those projects are done and we're not gonna go for that money anymore. It's gonna be future projects.
Understood. And I think it's, it's also worth, if, just to make a second point, um, if we did support the, something like the Carboni's property, that it, there's a good chance that the water main is going to come from Southborough up to Hopkinton. It's not a far stretch to imagine that there'll be sewer following that shortly after. And that would definitely put a high value on the Carboni property to put a larger complex in there with a lot of kids. Just a thought.
Uh, Karen, go ahead.
Thank you, Rob. Um, I'm, I'm kind of gonna look back to your original point that you made in that we were voted in by the, by the people of Hopkinton. And I know although Parker indicated it was only rejected by five votes. Actually, I think the last time we talked, it was eight votes. So I think it's going down slowly. But either way you look at it, um, it's half the town, right? So we can't, we can't ignore half of your community and, and go in, in one direction. And I think, you know, and I do apologize, I missed the last meeting. But I, last I'd heard when we were talking, I did, I actually did, it was a fascinating watch to watch all you guys on the last meeting. I did have to watch the whole thing. But, um, just in terms of, you know, trying to comply with the state without, without increasing the, the growth of, of Hopkinton and/or the schools. And I think Jane, actually, thank you for making that, that great point in that one, you know, the school grants are not impacted. And I think, um, you know, maybe John, if we go back and look at, you know, historically, what are the types of grants that we have applied for? Or, you know, that type of style and how many of those, you know, would we anticipate? I mean, this is, we're the planning board and I know that, you know, the town is now operating on a day-to-day operation. So we might, must know, you know, hypothetically, or at least close, what are the grants that we may apply for in the future? And how many of those would be at risk, you know, if we just didn't do anything versus, you know, kind of paper compliance, which is something that I know we've also talked about. So, but I, you know, my bigger point is just, you know, let's not ignore half the town that actually said, you know, we don't want this, regardless of whether it was a five or eight or, you know, 50 votes. And I, and I would actually, I'd make the argument either way if, um, you know, if it had been passed. So I think we, well, it had been passed, we should be on with other conversation. But anyway, that's, uh, that was this point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. All right. Go ahead, Parker.
I was just gonna ask John, cause like, folks, I just want to be quick to be really clear. Jeff, you listen to people. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but my fear is, is that we don't have enough time to get a, a map in place that is, one, going to be state compliant. And, and like, two, if, if we now propose a new map, that we're going back on some of the reasons why we're adjusting the old map, we look like we're talking out of both sides of our mouths. And like, John, one thing I was gonna ask is, the question I had is, from a process perspective, like, we're in crunch time, right? Like, we're, we literally might not have enough time left before the end of the year even to get something put together. And I was just curious if you could maybe help speak to that, or am I missing something?
Yeah. So, um, I mean, we'll have enough time to put something together. I can put something together for a meeting. I cannot guarantee that we're gonna have it reviewed by the state to make sure it's compliant. That's, that's the rub, you know, I'll, I can get something and Zach can, and Plan Board can get something on the warrant, but we don't know if it's gonna be compliant. We can assume based on all the, you know, exercises that we have to go through, but it took, I think it took all over three months, if not four months, to get a response from the state on the review of the bylaw.
I don't know if this is comforting. Hold on one second. I, I don't know if this is comforting or not, but of the towns that need to comply by, uh, December 31st, 2024, about ha- over, I think over half, I think is the number? Right, right around half or in the same boat. Like, so that's where many of our fellow communities are, are as well. Not that it's helpful, but it's a point of fact.
Uh, uh, just to finish my, uh, uh, point is, is I, I'm all for us having a discussion about the importance of, uh, the majority rule. Um, but like sometimes as a leader, you have to look at the realities where we are. And I'm, I'm more of an institutionalist and somebody that wants to avoid risk. And probably understand that on paper today, there are only a select amount of grants that might be up for the chopping block. But we don't know if state, if certain municipalities or towns continue to, uh, try and avoid this, that they might ratchet up, the state might ratchet up the amount of grants that are taken away. Like, I don't want to be part of that pool. I don't want to be part of the laboratory of legal theory and join, you know, lawsuits. I would rather be find a way to, you know, be compliant and continue on our path for bigger and brighter things for this town. And I think the, the last thing is, is like, we're, we're in a Hopkins and we're in a number one school, your number two school district, uh, essentially in the state. And, uh, among public school districts, what, people are going to want to come here. It is inevitable, it is inevitable. Um, so how we can like look for the, the arc of our, uh, you know, community's futures, I think what's most important. And Karen, it's five votes because if you have eight and then you delete five, uh, then it's, it swings it that way. We only needed to win five, but yes, it was, it was eight. You're right. Um, that's all I was trying to say.
Matthew, go ahead.
Just thanking Parker for, uh, what he just covered. One of my, the, one of the big concerns, right, is, is the, the potential legal costs or, or the almost certain legal cost if, if we don't pass something that the state likes. So it's a little concerning to hear a few people on board seeming to argue against the zoning in, in general. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of wondering, like, where do we stand as a board? Do we think that it's not even worth considering putting something together that complies? Um, is we don't want the zones at all? Or are we?
My perspective is we want to put forward our best plan, uh, possible. And, uh, I'm a little, uh, you, you had mentioned possible plans. I, uh, that makes me nervous, but, uh, I think we, as a, like, from my perspective, I want to put together the best plan possible that the town supports. And if I could have a unanimous vote, that would be my ideal scenario.
So the one other thing, just to talk about respecting the town's wishes, and I definitely think we should listen to the people that elected us. It, it, as, as Parker said, it was a gap in eight people. And people that stood up, stood up for different reasons. Some didn't like, think we should pass anything that in compliance with the MBTA zoning, regardless of what it was. Some people didn't like specific areas. And other people just said, hey, we should come back with a special town meeting. We shouldn't do this now because we don't have enough information. All of those people together voted against it. Um, and so it, I don't think we can necessarily say that if we even propose the same map with more information, better information that we present, that it's necessarily going against half the town. I'm not saying again, that we definitely should present the same map. I think getting the information that we've asked from John and Zach makes sense, so we can reassess. Um, but I, I don't think, even if we were to put together the same map, it would be necess- it's the same thing as saying going against the will of the town, uh, of the majority.
So I, I look, I kind of look at it a little bit like this. So the property at the, uh, on the corner of Hayward and South, South Street, like the, the residents that live in the community, uh, like Massbonock residents that live in that community, the more time, like if that, that, uh, landowner still wants to rezone it. So if I was, with more time, if I was the residence of, um, the Preserve, I would try to organize, like, I think it's a, it's a, it's an, it's a big risk where they were, they would put more effort in trying to organize, uh, other residents against it, where I feel like they maybe, maybe didn't feel like they had it, had the time, but they've seen success. I don't, I'm very nervous about that as a potential plan with, with a community group that could have time to organize to, that doesn't want it on their property for the, the reasons they don't. I don't, I don't think that's an, uh, just a far-fetched idea, uh, concept. Michael, go ahead.
Hey, I probably asked this before, but I, I can't remember the answers. I don't, you know, might have put John on the spot. Do we know for Do we know for the, um, the Business District one in the center that seems to be, you know, non-controversial at town meeting and non-controversial with this group? How close that would get us to compliance? Like, how much, um? That would like fulfill the obligation from the MBTA Communities Act?
On its own?
Yeah, sorry, John.
Yeah, it wouldn't comply. It's not big enough.
Like, how close it would get us, or?
The cool spreadsheet. I, I mean, it's significantly smaller than the Upper Cedar Street District, so we, we, there would still be. A significant amount of, um.
I think it's like twenty or thirty percent of the land requirement.
You can't like modulate it a little bit, uh.
I mean, you can make it bigger.
Yeah, but I don't know if we wanna triple it in size around the center of the town, so.
Through, through, through you, Rob. Um, I believe it's eighteen point seven acres is what I remember from Business District. Um, and it needs to be, the majority needs to be contiguous, so we need fifty acres total. So it's less than. And I don't think it was as dense as we had Upper Cedar either, so there was a density issue.
Do you need me to stop pull up the data?
No, no, I think Matthew's probably right. Yeah, that sounds right. It was probably like a third to forty percent, maybe.
Through the chair, Lucia, what was the risk for if we overlay on Windsor or, uh, Legacy Farms that you echoed at a previous meeting?
In terms of the affordable housing issue?
Yeah.
That's, that's the one thing we need to, uh, be sure, like, um. That we, uh. Don't, uh, provide the ability to remove affordable housing units. If, like, those proper, I think we should have those properties evaluated with that as the requirement, like, not. We don't wanna give a developer the chance to remove affordable housing units from our. The number of units in town, but I still think we should go through the process of zoning advisory committee evaluating those two properties. That's my, my opinion. I see no downside.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Louis, Lucia.
Um, so, hearing what everyone's saying, I think if we do have another special town meeting in December, we will have more information. And I don't think any of us are coming at this saying, you know, we want to force the town to do one thing or the other. We are trying to comply with what the state has put before us. We are doing the best that we can to come up with a plan that. The town will support. And I think it's great that we're looking at other properties to see if there's. You know, somewhere else that the town would support, um, to do this. But in December, we're going hopefully to have some more information about what happened with Milton. In October, or what happens with Milton in October, um, whether they lose their lawsuit to the state. And whatever repercussions there are, or if they win that lawsuit and they don't have to. Build the MBTA zoning or, sorry, zone for MBTA communities. Um, and so I think that's gonna be all very helpful. And in terms of Milton, one of the things that, um, I've, I've. Thought about as people are talking about lawyers fees and all of that. I remember reading an NBC Boston article, I wanna say. Where they were talking about Milton paying their lawyer nine hundred dollars an hour, um, to represent them in October. So that I also think is one of the things that people should consider is that. Yes, there's this possibility of adding more housing to Hopkinton when we already have a lot of housing. Um, and a lot of schoolchildren that we need to educate, but on the flip side, it's not free to not zone. For MBTA communities.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think, like I said before, we wanna put together, we wanna put our best plan forward. What we all, what as a board, we think is the best plan possible. And hopefully it gets approved unanimously, cause everybody else sees that it's the best plan possible. But there is the reality that, that some of the people that don't want the state mandating what towns should do. Like, there might be a chance we can't change that person's mind, no matter what we do. So, I, I, I don't know how to handle that, but, uh, that, that is also something. That is a consider, it's, it's there, it's just something.
Just, sorry, Parker, can I just clarify something? Cause Lucia said the Milton case, and I, I kind of talked about this with a bunch of people around town. I don't think Hopkinton is gonna get as much of a benefit from the result of Milton, the Milton case as a lot of people think. Because my understanding of the Milton case is that Milton is challenging the fact that they're a rapid transit community, not that they don't have to do the MBTA communities. So the state could vote, or not vote, but the, the courts could rule against them. And then they would just be a adjacent community and still have to do MBTA communities. So I, I don't really, a lot of people like to hang their hat on the Milton case and, and hope that it's gonna reveal something that can relate to Hopkinton. But I really don't think it will.
I, I, I just wanna say, Robert, I wholeheartedly agree with your last point, which is. When I was in Illinois State Government, we used to call it unfunded mandates, where the state would pass down requirements for, uh, you know, local municipalities to have to abide by. But only have a stick and no carrot. And, you know, what we kind of said at town meeting in some instances was like, we're, we're sorry that this is happening right now. But like, we, we are being forced right now as a town to do this, and I didn't draw this map. I think this was like before my time on the board. I, but I think you're right. It's like, it's unfortunate that this is what it's come to, that we're basically being forced. We have no, like, what if the state had, uh, capex? You know, debt forgiveness baked into communities that adopted this, planned the best, and that then. You know, we could essentially see like the backend of our school bonds, you know, taken over by the state or some effect. You laugh, but like.
I'm not laughing, I'm, I'm, I'm appreciating how, how good of an idea it is.
We would build, cause like, I would build, you know, maybe a bold community around the T stop. So people could go into Worcester or Boston, but like, they didn't do that. They said like, hey, Hopkins, you have to do this and you're gonna pick up a tab on it. So, like, I share the frustration of residents wholeheartedly. I just wish we had a carrot with the stick, you know? That would have been great.
Yes, this is, uh. I feel like a lot of, uh, I feel like a lot of, uh. Residents and people in other towns feel like this is an unfriendly, uh. Uh, law that's being forced down communities, uh, forced upon communities that they didn't ask for. Uh, Matthew, go ahead.
So the, the, the fundamental aspect, though, right, is just going off of Parker's, like, the. State delegates zoning to the towns because they think the towns know how to zone better for their community. But it's something that's delegated and if the courts were to say, oh, you can't tie funding because they didn't pass laws in town. What, I mean, what's gonna happen? The state's gonna say, fine, we won't tie funding to it. We're just going to demand that everything within fifty miles or whatever of a MBTA stop is now. Got this looser regulation. Um, I, like, it seems like it could be an even worse situation if the specifics of the, of, of the law gets overturned. Yeah, I.
I'm, I'm not a lawyer. I, I don't, I do. Like I said, I think us, for us, we wanna put our best plan forward. My opinion is, will communities challenge it in court? I believe communities will challenge it in court. But I don't wanna go that route. I'd rather pass, get a best plan passed.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Jane.
Do we have a timeline on when Zach might be, um, taking this up or completing it? With the thoughts that we gave him at our last meeting, so that we could continue the discussion with their input.
Through the chair, I can probably answer that.
Yeah, John, thank you.
Discuss, or Ted and I discussed, and it's really, um, I need to finish up the proposal. With the properties that the planning board identified to then have something for Zach to talk about. So we anticipate a meeting this month, but we have not scheduled it yet, so I can't tell you when it's gonna be because I don't know for sure. Uh, it may be early August, depending on schedules. July is a really hard month to have meetings. Um, so I, I can't tell you when, but it, it, it should be soon.
Yeah, cause it seems like we're spinning our wheels right now without having feedback from them, so that we have a jumping off point to continue the discussion.
To speak on Zach's behalf, which I probably really can't, but I think they are waiting for guidance from the planning board as well. So it's, it's a little bit, I think Zach is waiting on some firmer guidance from the planning board, uh, because.
Didn't we give it to them the last time?
For the newer, for the new parcels? Yeah, but I don't know what you're looking for Zach to necessarily.
Well, they were going to look into the numbers, weren't they?
I mean, I'm gonna look into the numbers.
Yeah, you were gonna look at the numbers.
I think, I think the real, I think the reality is the guidance was, uh. Is, is gonna end, um, end up with John evaluating the possibility, presenting that to the zoning advisory committee. And then discussion will happen. I think that's the, the reality of what, what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I would be interested in their, in their, um, take on the paper compliance, so we actually have something to compare it to with the other one.
Matthew, go ahead.
I, like, again, I, I think the way Zach ended up was basically trying to find something that is what we've been calling paper compliance, where it wouldn't be something developed right away. Um, so, but, um, I, to John's question, I think what we settled on last time in terms of what we were looking for. John slash Zach to look at is, can we make those, uh, areas work? And what is the impact to the town in terms of, uh? Do we think there'd be, like, what immediate growth might happen, if any? And what's the impact on things like affordable housing or other things that we wouldn't, that wouldn't be immediately visible? Um, is it even practical? And Legacy, I think, was an open question that we didn't look at last time, uh, last year. Because, you know, uh, I think John or somebody said it's, it's just a whole legal rat's nest to untangle what's possible in there. So if, if Zach looks at this in early April, we're looking at, was it eight fifteen or eight, uh, eight twelve, eight nineteen? Something like that is that when we might come back to reconvene. Um, and we have basically that and September to review and get. Legal review. So we've got maybe three meetings to finalize anything.
Yeah, that, that sounds, that sounds about accurate. Does anyone have anything more? We can, we can edit any meeting. We can put this on an, on as an agenda item. Uh, until we get to a proposal.
So, Rob, I, since you said that you wanted to use these for public comment, I, I think it's worth keeping on for public comment as we're discussing. These things, because I don't know how we'll get feedback ahead of time, otherwise.
Okay, we can keep it as a, just an agenda item and, and if, if anyone finds new information. Uh, we can discuss if, if there's anyone from the public that attends that wants to talk about it, we can let them speak. But, um, I'm not opposed to just keeping it as an ongoing agenda. I think. I think for tonight, we had a lot of good discussion. Um. I, I think just more information is better in general. And, and if we can find out if those two parcels will work without any neg, the possible negative consequences. We, we discussed, I think that information would be really, uh, meaningful to us as a planning board. So I'd like to continue, uh, on that path. But I, I think for, for tonight, I, I think we kind of wrapped up the conversation, unless anyone has any last minute, uh, comment. All right, we're at that point in the meeting where, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening. All right. Uh, roll call vote, Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Runka.
Yes.
Michael King. I didn't hear you, Michael.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Uh, Parker Happ?
Yes.
Jane Moran?
Yes.
Karen Wills?
Yes.
And Rob Ensign is a yes. All right, everybody, no sidewalk, uh, this weekend. Everybody, uh, stay cool over the next couple of days, supposed to be super hot, uh, and, uh, see everybody on August fifth. Bye.
We beat the Zoom counter.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.